Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the world for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, thank you. As summer comes to an end, Father, our prayers are for our children. Let the streets be safe. Father, our prayers for this community as we change seasons and change our interest in our varieties of things we do. But, Father, most of all, we still seek your wisdom and guidance upon the men and women who lead this community, for their vision, their desires, for families to thrive and for children to grow. Father, for our lives to be all that you desire us to be. So, Father, that's our prayer tonight. We come seeking your grace and your mercy and thanking you for your protection upon us through those who provide that. Thank you, in Jesus' name.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Clerk Treasurer, could you please call the roll of the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
President Bella.
Here.
Sixth President, Juan Hason, with me, Cora.
Thank you very much, sir. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, registered voucher approval for August 13th, excuse me, the register summary for ARP purchases for also August 13th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes from July 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of the consent agenda. Open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, budget and finance. Counselor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have our next budget meeting on this Friday at 4:00 PM with current in budget season, so lots of budget meetings, and that's all.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, to Mr. Svetinoff, Joe, do we have any, we've taken care of all the pending ordinances, correct?
Correct.
All right, I know we have, I have one, I've gotten a phone call, and I don't know if the other councilors have gotten this phone call, about on the weekends, lawn contractors. And I received one where a lawn contractor was out there at 5:30 in the morning across the street in Chapel Manor, cutting the lawn on a business, but her house backs right up to this business. And I've known this woman for a number of years, so I'd like to look at that contractor ordinance as when they can, construction hours and when especially the lawn care people can start mowing around town up against residential areas.
Well, no, I think it'd also just conflict with the actual business ordinance in town where they, or any business can start up at a certain time.
Okay. And then I know that we received an email, Sheila, from our fire inspector, that he has an ordinance he would like us to be looking at, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to get those taken care of. Chief Nusis, I don't know if you have any additional ordinances?
Oh, we have just the ones that we were just waiting to get published. In regards to the issue with the lawn service, we can, we're looking into, I thought it was residential, it was residential, I was going to say of course and no, no, but I do remember with like the garbage companies, when they were coming prior to 6 o'clock, it didn't apply to certain businesses when we had looked at it previously, so I don't know if this is the same. I'll check into it.
Okay. All right, those are the two that I have, Joe, if we can look at those ordinances, and then I'll call a meeting. Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Street Department, Counselor Yuzlak.
Well, we have most of the street bumps up, and that's going very well. And we will be doing paving soon. And we had a meeting today with Steve, and he passed out the different streets that should be paved, and the branches have all been picked up so far. So I think we're doing pretty good with the Street Department and with Steve King. Thank you, sir.
Very good, thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Vice President Neal.
No, thank you, President Bella. We're just wrapping up our summer season with all of our beautiful plants this year. They turned out remarkably beautiful. I'm very pleased with the work that Street Department have, and the efforts that they've put into making sure that all of our planters were planted and watered properly, and so everything looks great. Can't wait to see what they're going to do for the fall.
Any updates on the gateway signs?
The gateway sign next meeting is on the 19th at 3:00 PM. We're finalizing, we've pretty much finalized the plan, so now we're looking into the prices of everything. So more to come.
Thank you. Environmental affairs, Counselor Pettit.
Mr. President, I'll defer to Vice President Neal and Mr. Lake during their reports for stormwater and Lake County solid waste.
Sure. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Griffin, do you have any kind of reports since Ms. Hardaway's ill tonight?
Mr. President, I never feel that I'm any equal to Madam Chair of that committee, but I can tell you that she gave us an instruction pursuant to the earlier request of the Chair of the Council Affairs Committee. It's also documented in my report before all of you that she feels it's ready for us to be able to send to Council Affairs Committee the proposed amendments to the Employee Personnel Policy Manual. As you know, that's really the first year we've had it. It says in there, there's an instruction for both the HR Director and the Clerk, excuse me, the Town Manager, to actually review that and make recommendations. We've had it reviewed at the Personnel Committee, and now she felt that the next step would be to take it to the Council Affairs. There is a provision in that text also that says that we do have to circulate with the department heads for a period of time as well for their feedback, but that would be the only thing I can think of that's forthcoming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Public safety, Ms. Hardaway, any report? Steve, I'm sorry, Chief?
At this time.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a Redevelopment Commission meeting before this, passing a resolution that will, as Counselor Yuzlak alluded to, we have the paving list that Steve put together on a Paser method, ranking them 1 to 10. He gave out the ones and twos to all seven councilors. And the financing mechanism, it was decided would be a Redevelopment Commission bond issue in the amount of $6 million that will be handled by London Witty and Barnes &amp; Thornburg again, as they always have done excellent work for us. The funds, according to Mr. Pittman, would be ready September 5th. There are going to be another couple of meetings that RDC and Town Council resolutions that they'll have to pass, and I believe Steve is working on the contractor books right now, correct, Steve?
Correct.
Mr. King, Mr. Pettit mentioned ones and twos streets, and I think the council knows what all that means, but I don't think the residents do. So could you explain to us what the method is and what street ones and street twos are?
Sure. So our streets are rated, just like any other municipality, we, a Paser rating, they're ranked 1 through 10, ones being the worst, or 10 being the best. We go through a rating every year, it's required by the state, it also qualifies us for community crossing grant money. So the manual, it's online, so Paser manual, this is what we go by, it's got illustrations, verbiage in there on how the roads are graded, so that's how we do our road ratings, and that's how we determine what we're going to pave, to make sure we get the worst of the worst.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Utility liaison, Counselor Chandler Felton.
No report at this time, President.
Parks and Dean &amp; Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President, we had a committee meeting. Lisa had obtained a couple of invoices that we have processed for an evaluation of the heating and air conditioning system at the Dean &amp; Barbara White Community Center. We also entertained a proposal, and Michael, I will turn to you.
Sir.
The ARSH Group has submitted a proposal to update our 2024 Park and Recreation Master Plan. Would you elaborate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Town Attorney, and Clerk Treasurer. I did just issue for you a report that was given by Tagi Arshami. He is part of the ARSH Group, he's a sole practitioner in planning, he does this work all the time. The park master plan is something that the Dean &amp; Barbara White Community Center Committee and Parks have been discussing for a while. We're kind of almost six months behind in getting this done. We need to undertake that. The front of it says the combined cost of this will be $45,600. If you turn to the very back, it breaks out what we're doing. The first thing we're going to instruct him to do frankly is the park's impact fee. The last time that you've done impact fees, I believe, it's been 10-plus years. This is a source of money that the law allows us for the areas prior to development that you're allowed to, based on costs and an algorithm that he prepares, to recover costs that will help develop parks in the areas where the newest development is taking place. He had indicated since we built the Dean &amp; Barbara White Community Center, for example, our fees are woefully low and should be going up. 15, 5% of the monies that we generate for that can actually go to the cost for paying part of the planning, so some of the sources for paying for this is going to come from that, and that's the $22,900 impact fee study. And then immediately following that is the parks plan. He's done master plans in my former billet, he just got awarded a contract to do it in a neighboring community. He's done this a lot. He actually performed the one that we had before, and it's necessary for us to be good stewards of the resources that the public asks us to, on their behalf, make better, but also for us to be considered for any kind of grants that are funded through federal money. We have to have a five-year plan in place. So it was the recommendation of the committee to recommend to the council its approval. It does require your approval, and we would need that in part because both of the elements of the contract exceed the $15,000 threshold, which the purchasing ordinance allows any one of the department heads to do. We needed the purchasing agency, which in this case would be the council, as the park authority to authorize this, and we believe that we can identify the resources to support its costs.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. At this time, Mr. President, I make a motion that we retain the ARSH Group with a fee of $45,600 to do both a five-year Park and Recreation Master Plan and the park impact fee.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to accept this proposal for both plans, parks plan and impact fee. The total amount is $45,600. Mr. Griffin, you have this in the budget somewhere you're going to tap into?
We know that there's appropriation sufficient to make you lawfully approve this if you choose to, but it won't be in one place, Mr. President, I'll have to tell you that.
That's all right. Thank you, Michael. Open for discussion? Hearing no discussion, it is similar to a contract, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. January, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal. Vice President Neal, thinking?
You can pass her and come back.
Okay, we can come back. Councilwoman Haynes Edwards. Okay, moving on to the next, Councilwoman Chandler Felton. Okay, maybe we need to revisit this?
You're going to vote?
Okay.
I'll pass. We can revisit.
Okay, so we're probably in a motion for that, but do we have a motion to table?
Complete the roll call, please.
Okay, okay. Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes. Then we're going to go back to Mrs. Neal.
Yes.
And was that a vote?
Out in the audience?
It sounded like, didn't it? Sounded like a vote.
We just got it.
Mr. Griffin, is there an urgency to get this approved this evening? Is that what we're doing?
Mr. President, we would like to have it approved and to move forward, but of course we'll defer to the prerogatives and discretion of the full council. If, if, it's just a matter of acquainting themselves with some of the language in that, you could, by general consent, move this to be at the end of the meeting and take it up then if the council just needs a little more time to review it. I'll be very happy to ask any questions on this. It did get the full-throated endorsement of the Dean &amp; Barbara White Community Center Committee.
Or we could do a deferral in the next meeting, correct?
You could do that.
We could, we can schedule this for the workshop, Mr. President, on the 21st, I think you have. Why don't we make this, let's, let's do this.
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll rescind my motion. Margie?
I'll rescind my second.
Make a motion to table this for two weeks and have it placed on the council workshop on the 21st.
Please. Thank you.
Well, it's been in our packet, why couldn't we look at it?
I don't know if I got a second on my table.
If you don't mind, Mr. Pettit, let's, let's finish the voting, so either abstain then or vote no, if you don't mind.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
I'll do abstain as well. We can just go ahead.
Mr. January, what's, what's our total?
It's three, abstaining, and two, the six, three in favor.
Okay, a motion fails. Mr. Pettit?
Motion to table, Mr. President, for two weeks and place on the council workshop agenda on the 21st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, I have a question. If it's three and three.
Mrs. Yuzlak, one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If it's three and three, the vote, can Mr. Eric January break the vote?
Well, they didn't vote no, they abstained.
Oh, they abstained, so that had a lot to do.
You don't have a positive or affirmative, Joe.
Okay, I understand. I got it.
Is that right, Mr. Svetinoff?
Correct, right now. Well, I mean, he could vote in favor, which could leave a four to zero, four affirmatives, zero, zero nays, and three abstentions. I guess what we do at this time is turn it over to the Clerk Treasurer for a tie-breaking vote.
So in this case, particular case, I would abstain because I haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay.
Okay, so we.
Mr. President, motion to table is on the floor.
I second.
Right. Discussion on the motion to table. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye opposed. We'll table this.
Okay. Now that, now that threw me off, Michael, on our, the rest of our report for the committee. I do want to reiterate to Steve and Lisa, I do, at the next committee meeting, please be prepared, I want to talk about the Moe's Building and what we need to do with that thing. I know, Steve, you've been through it, I need to go through it again, or for the first time. I know Mike Neal's been through it, there's concerns about the condition of the building and what we want to do with that, so we need to tackle, we need to tackle that next, okay? Also, at the committee meeting, councilors, it was decided, I think, this discussion of the committee members based on public comment at the last council meeting about the condition of the bike trails and who would be maintaining those. So at this time, I want to instruct Mr. King that the Street Department will be mowing and taking care of the Erie-Lacawana Trail and the CNO Trail. Is that correct, Mr. Griffin? That's the, that was the vote of the committee, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but it would require for an instruction to come from the council unless the Chair believes that there's unanimous or general consensus for it. He could declare it approved by virtue of general consent.
Are you aware of this, Mr. King?
No. How, how are we supposed to do this?
Well, I think we were thinking the Tiger mower with the arm up could go, you know, one of the concerns of a citizen member two weeks ago was the condition of the CNO going west from Taft, that it was very dark and very overgrown, and I know that's the newer section of the trail that's open, but.
I'll just, we're just going to need some more.
All right, let's do this.
We're just going to need some more direction.
Let's do this again, Steve. We'll, we'll talk about it at our committee, and we'll bring it back to the council or at the workshop. We'll figure it out. I.
All right.
Okay.
The motion's withdrawn, Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Anything else?
That's, that's enough.
Special committees, abandoned and blighted properties, Counselor Haynes Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Griffin has continued to work on the newly adopted amendments as it pertains to the nuisance and unsafe building code. His help on this matter has been greatly appreciated. The Police Chief Nusis, Commander Panuka, along with our code enforcement officers, have been very helpful, helpful with the out with the old, in with the new, leans and, leans and procedures. And so we are on the road to success of finding out just exactly how we all mesh together, how everybody's roles work together. And then also, we are just about ready for, and Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, for that demo on 69th and Broadway.
We paid, yes, we approved those claims at the RDC, that'll come out of the Broadway allocation area.
Correct. And that is all that I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Very good. Counselor Sheen, why don't you retain the floor to talk about your semi- quincuntedio committee.
Look at you, gold star. I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to special town projects, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We have just finished up assisting the Police Department and the Fire Department with the National Night Out. I would deem it to be a great success. We had a lot of residents to come out. If any of you guys missed it, you can look on our social media pages to look at the pictures, but the Fire Department, the Police Department, they had just about every element out there. We did food giveaways. The team that I worked with was very diligent in making sure that everything ran to perfection. If I was to say myself, I think the only flaw was the wind. We had a resident that said, "I missed the balloon release," only to discover that our balloons were just blowing away. But it was a great success. We are jumped directly into planning for the trunk of tree, which is already scheduled for October 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It is going to be an outdoor event, and weeks from there, we will be having our Christmas tree lighting. So the season is vastly approaching, and we are preparing for the next town events.
Wow, we're talking about Christmas?
Yes.
It's too soon to talk about Christmas. That's all.
Anything to add, Chief, about the National Night Out? Is that, did it go as you had planned and envisioned?
It actually went better than I had envisioned. I think this is the first year that we had a lot of our stuff out. We were able to actually put everything together, so I want to thank everybody that helped make it happen. I want to thank the public for coming out, but I have to, you stole my line, counselor. I think everything was good except the wind, but Lisa wasn't, you know, extremely hot like it's been some other years, but everything went great.
Great. My hats off to you and your committee, counselor. Very nice job. Moving on tonight to department and commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. The next meeting will be held September 3rd, Thursday in September. The only new updated news I have is the hazardous waste for the month of August is scheduled on the 17th at Whiting Public Works, and that's in 1915 Front Street in Whiting, Indiana. And they're also still taking applications for the advisory board, so any citizen that would like to be on their advisory board, they're still taking applications for that. You can look on the Lake County Solid Waste website for more information.
Great, thank you. Moving on to stormwater management resources, our director is Matt Lake.
Thank you. I'll make this short due to the long agenda that we have here. The Southmore Park Drainage Project Phase 2 is out for bid. We anticipate that we'll get some good numbers back because we already have 12 contractors picking up bid packets. This is a joint project with Maryville Conservancy District. They're going to do the sanitary, we're going to do the storm, so that'll delete all the wells and septics out, or septic's out there, and then provide the rest of the drainage for the stormwater system for the entire subdivision. Hickory Ridge Regional Detention, we're preparing a bid packet right now, where we anticipate advertising September 13th, awarding the contract on the 1st, and starting construction on October 21st. So that'll be a pretty, pretty big project. Independence Health Road Edition, we're 95% done with the design. The town orchards are going well, the two orchards that we have planted so well that we've been asked to present at the Chicago Wellness Alliance Conference in 2024 at Purdue University. There were 60 proposals submitted, and we were selected as, as one of them, so it was pretty competitive to get in, to present. And we are going to do some appraisals, too, for land acquisition for Grand Avenue and 97th Avenue to relocate the ditch for that particular project. And that's, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on to Fire Territory Board, Counselor Neal.
No report.
Moving on to department reports, Parks and Recreation's Lisa Roberts.
No report at this time.
Chief, anything else to add under?
I don't have my official numbers yet for July. Just wanted to add that the Women's Self-Defense Class filled up pretty quick, it's on August 22nd. If anything does come available, we will post it, but until then, it's all full. School is starting tomorrow, so we're going to have our officers out and about enforcing the, paying special, special attention to the areas where school buses are going to be going, so you'll be seeing them out there from right around 6:30 to 7:30, and then we'll be repeating again in the afternoon. So that's about it.
Thank you, Chief. Planning and Building Department, Sheila Shine.
So, Mr. President, I don't have anything at this time. I'll defer for the other reports later.
Very good. Mr. King, anything else to add from the Street Department or Engineering?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is we, last Friday, we participated in a touch of truck event at Salt Elementary. I've never been to one of these, it was great, police and fire were there. I talked to the principal, Nick, over, I don't remember his last name, but we'd like to make a bigger presence on this next year to the event, and it was, it was a nice event.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Griffin, Town Administration.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. Town Attorney, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, I have submitted to you the report of the Town Manager for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. Given the length of our matters, I think that it speaks for itself. Unless you have a specific question of me, I'll be very pleased to be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, are we ready? Moving on tonight to general orders, we have a number of ordinances, and we're going to be diligent and get through them. Moving on to ordinance 24-26, it's an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, amending ordinance 16-22 to increase stormwater user fees for the Town of Maryville, Indiana, to fund the maintenance, management, repair, and improvement of the town's drainage, detention, and retention ponds. Mr. Lake, would you like to approach the podium up there? And you have Trista there, too, to help?
Thank you. The intent of the ordinance here is to generate revenue in order to cover the costs of properties that we've been acquiring. The reason we've been acquiring these properties is because of, in residential subdivisions, the HOAs have become inactive, and so the maintenance of detention ponds and common areas have gone neglected, and so we are stepping up to take responsibility. So as we, as we acquire these properties on tax sale, we intend to maintain them to the best of our ability. In order to do that, we didn't anticipate the costs, so this adjustment is just to cover the costs of basic maintenance for those properties.
Do we have an estimate of what the average homeowner is going to be paying for this?
The stormwater fee will go from $9 to $10. That's an increase in $1.
Fair enough. Trista, anything to add?
I believe there's questions.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve ordinance 24-26 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, for approval of ordinance 24-26 on first reading. Open for discussion, council.
Mr. President, I just want to point out to the, to the audience and why this is needed by Matt and the Stormwater Utility, is that there are, correct me if I'm wrong on my numbers, Matt, there's 175 retention ponds in the Town of Maryville. Town owns only five. Is that correct?
We own about 16 of them.
16?
Yeah, and we contract out about half of the mowing on those, and the other half we do with the marsh master because of the difficulty of it, and so.
But the, the retention ponds are not being taken care of?
Yeah.
Vast majority.
Yeah, and it's really, it's a common theme throughout, not just Maryville, but all over, that HOAs are formed, and then they become active at first, but then over time, no one wants to pay their dues, and then no one wants to take responsibility, and they kind of fizzle out. So we do have a few really good HOAs in town, but the vast majority of them have failed to meet their expectations.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and hear Ordinance 24-26 on second reading.
Motion by Mr. Pettit to suspend the rules tonight so we can hear this ordinance on second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Uszak. Open for discussion on the motion to suspend the rules. Hearing none, Mr. January.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor to suspend. Mr. Svetnov, correct me if I'm wrong, I think a public hearing was held at the Stormwater Management Board meeting at your location, is that right, Matt?
That's, that's correct.
Were there any remonstrations about this ordinance?
Uh, there was not. There was just discussion, but no remonstration.
Okay. Very good. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak, for approval of Ordinance 24-26 on second and final reading. Discussion from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. Mr. Lake. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 24-28, it's the Town of Maryville ordinance providing that zoning ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District classified to a Planned Unit Development Zoning District.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Counselor Sheehan for approval. Who was it? I'm sorry, Counselor Neal.
Neal.
I'm going to, you guys are getting split up. Open for discussion.
Mr. President, this is, actually, Leona and Margie and I saw this at the Plan Commission. This is right over here. This is the old Geist and Funeral Home property. It's known as Pirate's Plaza now. It's a three-lot subdivision. Del De Mayo is in the process of building, I'll leave it general, he says estate building. We think it's going to be the new BMV, is what he told us at the.
Regional headquarters.
Regional headquarters for the BMV. And then there are two outlots right on Broadway, but you can see that they've torn down the funeral home, and the new building is going up. Sheila, I don't, did I cover everything?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Everybody wants to come to Maryville. How about that? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 24-29, it's an ordinance of the Town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations in the 2024 budget entitled Casino Gaming Fund. The amount requested for the 300 series in the budget is $45,000. Mr. Griffin, why are we doing this, please?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to ask Trista Hudson of Senden and Dalton to actually explain this. She prepared this at the request of the department head, and she's appointed with purposes for which the addition was being sought. I can tell you there's fund balance to support this in addition to income, so it's not exceeding resources.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Hudson.
Sorry, give me just a moment. As I recall, the request is from Ms. Rosas as it relates to the Gary Public Transportation. There is balance in your casino fund for that expense. The Casino Gaming Fund, if you recall, is one of the miscellaneous funds, really, the revenue can be used for a variety of things, and we do purposely under-budget it so that there is some there in case of emergency or additional costs arise, which is the case in this situation. So, I'm comfortable in presenting this to you for your vote.
And why is the funding needed?
I believe it relates to the Gary Public Transportation contract. They were late.
It's part of, yeah.
They were late in billing last year, so one of the quarterly bills came in this year, kind of putting our standard budget off kilter just a tad. And I'm sorry, I don't have all the information.
No problems. I've required you to help me about who asks, and I can help you in this with just such good team.
Our share for the bus service, right.
Mr. President, with your permission, members of the council, on the advice, actually, of Mr. Pittman, what a fortuitous thing for you to be here. One of the things that we were concerned about was the use of allocation money to support what we think is a legitimate economic and redevelopment purpose, which is the Broadway Corridor, to make sure that that's sustained for ridership. There is a concern with some of the technical elements of the law, that in the absence of what is called an efficiency project agreement in place, those proceeds for allocation areas cannot be used. So, in consultation with the Town Attorney, we did a first draft of such an agreement. Mr. Pittman also reviewed it, and now it's being reviewed by the Gary Public Transportation Corporation proper officers, and it's just been delayed to get here, and we don't want to be untimely in paying for the other existence. There's not a complication if we use gaming money, but our goal will be to get that agreement in place so that allocation area money can be used to support that corridor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uszak, second by Counselor Neal, for approval of Ordinance 24-29, funding for the bus service in town. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 24-30, it's an ordinance of the Town of Maryville appropriating additional monies within the Fire Protection Territory Operating Fund for the year 2024, not included in the current budget. The requested amounts are for overtime $150,000 and insurance at $115,000.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit. Seconded by Counselor Neal. For approval of this ordinance. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bellah.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to our revised ordinance 24-31. This is the ordinance to support the Andrain High School through the use of the TIF funds. Mr. Pettit would like to present this a little more.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Upon the advice of our Town Manager and with the allocation areas' collection in January and July, Michael and Tom Pittman both recommended that we do a modification to the Ordinance 24-25, which would make the payment date February 1st to the, to the entity. I do want to stress again for the general public, for my fellow counselors, this is earmarked for a second entrance in the backside of Andrain when the renovation and redevelopment of that campus takes place. It's only for, it's only for infrastructure improvements.
That'll be off of 61st Avenue.
Yes. Georgia Street extended. I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Pettit.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Sheehan. Second by Counselor Sheehan. Open for discussion.
I just wanted to make the comment, I have sent this particular ordinance out to the Attorney General, make sure that it is completely legal, because I am still concerned about giving money to a Catholic organization, so I am waiting for his response. And then also, in regards to Section 6 of this particular ordinance, it still doesn't specify as I requested that the manner of execution be stated. We need to state whether this, in my case, it got to be written in signature.
There's no Section 6 on this.
There is a Section 6.
Yeah, you on the right.
2431.
Okay.
It's under Section 2, Section 6. They're amending the section that I requested that we address. So, the manner of execution is still not proper.
Counselor, do you have a suggestion for?
On council.
Mr. Pittman. Do you close the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record? I thought we had made some edits to this.
We did. They've all been circulated.
Thomas Pittman from the Indianapolis Law Firm at Barnes &amp; Thorberg. I guess I would respectfully disagree with your Clerk Treasurer. I do believe it's legal as written, where there was an attempt to make, made to accommodate Mr. January, and I, I guess I thought we had landed on something that would be acceptable, but that said, I'm of the formal opinion that this ordinance is valid.
It did, based on our email that we had. Thank you for providing the insight, just in terms of what you provided, but it clearly states that you have to state the manner of execution, and in here, it doesn't say whether it's facsimile, a handwritten signature, or anything, and that's what I'm saying. If, if it doesn't state that, because the clerk of this town is only going to sign it. It's not going to be facsimile, whatever.
I mean, of course, nobody's going to sign your facsimile without your express authorization, so in a way, you know, either way, you need to either sign or permit the, you know, the facsimile, but I just, I just don't think that it changes anything you would do, or...
The, the way that it was worded before, anybody could have signed it.
Oh, that got, that got taken out.
Yeah, that was taken out.
Right.
And my whole point is, is the next step is that we need to specify the manner of execution, and I believe that's something that you stated in your email.
Yeah.
And that's not included in this language.
Well, there's statutory language that sets forth the requirement for how this type of bond gets executed, so it's really kind of a matter of law. You can't change it in the ordinance, and you don't even have to include it in the ordinance because it's legally required regardless of what the ordinance says.
Mr. Griffin, you're 30 years and 33 days in public service as a Clerk Treasurer. 37, thank you, Leona. 37 days. Is there anything wrong here that we need to worry about? Is Mr. January just being cautious?
I, with, with, I understand that as a fiscal officer, he's being cautious, but all these statutory references, and one that we don't have in there, which is from Title 5, I think it's 1, not 11, Title 5, 1, dealing with bonds, provides that signatures can be by facsimile if that will facilitate the sale, and that the signature, that's decided by the council, and the Clerk Treasurer really in that case is doing it ministerially. What customarily happens under that law is that you will actually execute a real signature on one of the documents, that'll be a specimen, and then depending if we're, I don't know how we're going to serialize this, because it's really...
It, there'll just be one bond.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, there'll be one basically signature on that, and then if they needed to make it serial for multiple coupons, or if they were going to have series bonds, those could be by facsimile. That really is an option that we need whenever we're going to have book-registered bond financing. They're going to be held by a third party, registered perhaps as an underwriter to sell to the New York buyers of our debt. This particular debt is, as Mr. Pittman has shared with you before, it is legally construed as a bond, but it is designed to legally overcome some of the limitations in Indiana law with regard to the use of allocation area funds being directly given to a person that is an object of incentive. In Illinois, there is no barrier like that. This is a common practice. Lawyers not from Barnes &amp; Thorberg actually recommend this as well. So, I do think that the Clerk Treasurer's concerns, while I appreciate that he wants to pursue that, I think that helps inform you as an official who's elected, you really are kind of be bound once it's been decided, and your signature really is ministerial in this case. You're not evidencing your approval, you're not evidencing to the substance, you're doing an acknowledgement or an attestation, which is really saying, see the president's signature, the person that signed that is the president, and the lawful person who can actually authorize this, it's really more of an issue for the president signing it, and that's all really you're doing when you're attesting. I think I've covered that pretty well.
Yes.
Thank you both. Any other questions for these experts, council?
Could I add one, one note?
Mr. Pittman.
To Mr. January's point on, on the fact that Andrain is a Catholic entity, that issue has actually, was some years ago, decided by the, the United States Supreme Court, and the ruling was that you cannot, with this type of bond issue, discriminate against religious organizations. So, that's the way the United States Supreme Court viewed it. They didn't think that, that a religious institution was in any way being favored. They just thought you couldn't, you couldn't make them ineligible because they happened to be a religious organization, so I, I wanted to make note of that.
Sure. Mr. Pittman, my attorney completely disagrees. He provided some other United States laws, case law, that provided that we can't just give money to a Catholic organization, and that's why, because of what you said, what he said, that's why I'm seeking the counsel of the Attorney General. I'm open to hear from them.
Right.
Before we actually proceed.
And I would say that the, that the Supreme Court decision that I'm referencing was specifically on this type of bond issue. I, I know there are lots of cases out there that address the, you know, the interface between government and religious organizations, but basically, that opinion said that economic development revenue bonds can't, proceeds may be provided to any organization, even religious, so, so that there's no discrimination, but I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, and you're, you're taking it to the Attorney General, so, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
So, what does this entail? What does this mean now? Are we?
No, we're going to vote on it as soon as we're done with discussion.
Um, as far as I know, but the, the ordinance passed twice.
Yes.
It did, now...
This is an amendment as to the pay date, and then what Mr. January brought up.
Page of the pay date here.
Yeah, the, you know, and again, I, I can't stress enough, folks, fellow counselors, this is a public infrastructure improvement project. We could have easily, as the RDC ladies, my, my fellow members, we could have done a regular TIF bond, Eric, and said, "We're putting in Georgia Street for $900,000," right, Steve?
Give or take.
And it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have this discussion of Andrain. RDC could have taken that upon themselves, to punch Georgia Street through, buy the two properties, and build the road according to town standards.
We probably should have did that.
Yeah?
Well, obviously, there's nothing religious about those roads.
No, there's nothing, but again, it's, it's, it's a partnership, whether it be public or private, whether it be Catholic or Maryville School Corporation. Rick and I just went to the school board meeting, gave a $400,000 check last Tuesday.
The, the Maryville School Corporation is totally different from Andrain Church. Andrian, they, they are, the Maryville School Corporation...
High school.
High school, Catholic church.
It's not a church, it's a school.
I understand that, but it's part of the Catholic church.
Thank you.
All right, it's part of ours, the diocese.
Well, would it have cost more if the town did it, Sean?
I, I, I don't know, Margie. I mean, we're, we keep, you know, it is what it is. I mean, Andrian has asked for a commitment from us. They made a commitment to stay in this town, on the north end of town, from an economic development standpoint. All those businesses up there, the McDonald's, the Walgreens, the Strachan Van Till, all those businesses along Broadway, 61st Avenue, those people are, those kids are spending money there at lunch, after school, all those that go to the games, people from outside the town of Maryville, when Hanover Central comes into play, or Bishop Knoll, right, comes into play. They're spending money in our town. It clearly is economic development. If that school is not there, you're going to see an impact on, on the businesses. I'm telling, it's just, it's a fact. So, we can continue to beat this dead horse, bottom line is, this ordinance was passed twice by this council and an official vote. We can hem and haw about attesting and signing and this and that. It's done, is it not, Tom?
We'll see what the Attorney General says.
Well, and if that's what we want to keep doing, Eric, if we want to fight on economic development, then we fight on economic development.
That's not economic development. What you're doing on the north, on the south side of town is economic development. This is a gift.
Attorney Pittman, could you please provide the site to Mr. January tomorrow, so he could provide it to his attorney on the case that you're citing regarding religious entities receiving economic development?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Pettit, question. With the new entrance coming, do we know about how long that's going to take?
No.
And then will that alleviate them coming off of...
Yes.
That's what they want.
On Broadway.
Yes, that's one of the issues that they had, was having our police stand on Broadway, getting the kids out, getting, you know, yes.
So that exit will be closed off, and they'll only go through the 61st?
It won't be closed off.
No, it won't be closed off, it's a secondary.
Just won't be used for the busy games and things like that.
It'll be easier access, though.
Yeah. Hopefully improve traffic flow throughout the school property.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, would you take the roll call, please?
This is ordinance, um, twenty-four thirty-one. Okay. All right, Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, and motion carries. Second, everyone, this is our next, on my agenda. Mr. Griffin, is twenty-four dash thirty-two up next for us, the Boys and Girls Club approval?
I, I was struck by nothing under revised list title.
Okay. This was on our original agenda, I believe, that went out Friday to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Then moving on to ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-two. It's an ordinance of the Town Council, the Town of Maryville, authorizing the issuance of Town of Maryville, Indiana taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2024, Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Indiana Project, including bond anticipation notes and approving the, and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
So we have, Mr. President, we have two ordinances, twenty-four dash twenty-four and twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Mr. President, I beg the council's pardon, and yours.
Okay.
We believe that this did go through an introduction and first reading, and then been deferred. It is on your agenda as ordinance twenty-four twenty-four, and I think that was a correction also that was on this, from the initial preliminary that went out.
For second reading.
That is correct. So you still have ordinances to complete on first reading, and then you'll take this up under second reading, if you're...
Well, that makes more sense. Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Yes, I'm terribly sorry.
That's all right. Oh, no problem. Moving on tonight to ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-three. It's an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, providing zoning ordinance in Lake County, Indiana, to be amended by changing the established R, I'm sorry, A1 agricultural zone classification to a C-I dash S commercial industrial special district zone classification. Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this for two weeks until additional research can be done on the project that's proposed.
This would be a deferral.
Deferral, I'm sorry, deferral. Thank you. Deferral for two...
We have a motion to defer by Counselor Pettit for two weeks.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Uselak. Questions or comments on the motion to defer?
Nope.
Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favors.
Six in favor, we'll defer this for two weeks, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinance twenty-four thirty-four. Was that the one that we assigned to the... Got it here.
Mr. President, it's an additional appropriation ordinance.
Yes, for $60,000?
That's correct.
So this is the ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-four. It's an enactment appropriate, additional money in excess of the annual budget for the Police Department Continuing Education Fund. The amount in the 100 series is for overtime, the amount is $60,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Neal, with a second by Counselor Uselak, for approval of ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-four. Questions or comments from the council? Comments from the police chief? Hearing no other discussion, Mr. January, roll call.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, and motion carries. So are we going to use the twenty-four twenty-four, Mr. Griffin, for the second reading?
Yes. My hope is, Mr. President, members of the council, you have a revised version of this that was issued to you before the meeting. This also has been modified in Section 6, which had similar language of concern to the clerk treasurer in advance of its introduction, this consideration. I believe that's correct. And that has been revised, and I believe you got copies of that that we are asking to adopt. Like the prior ordinance that was considered for first reading, this does, in effect, adopt every one of the express statutes that are implicated for this particular kind of bond issue. It does remind in the specific sections about the duty to sign, and that not being a substantive signature, but a, a part of the formulation of process that evidences that the action was taken, not favored or endorsed by the clerk treasurer as fiscal officer in any way. And again, there is a statute that's implied with this from Title V, dealing with bond issues, and also actually, although this isn't a property tax back one, there is one in six, 1.120, I just said that to show off for you, sir. It is in Title V, it talks about the choice being up to the council to determine if it's facsimile signatures or not, and then all the signatories are bound by that, including the council president. But again, because this is really legally constructed as a bond, but is really devised as a way in order to lawfully, under Indiana law, yet these proceeds as an economic development incentive for legitimate reasons, into the group, or for the purposes of the group, as determined by the council, I don't think that the issues with regard to facsimile or not are going to be issued in a particular case, because I think this is not going to be a serialized bond, it's going to be a single big piece of paper. I think those are anxieties, and we're not doing a serial bond, it's going to be a single sheet.
Well, we have a, we have a duplicate ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-two, I believe.
I, I'm, the numbering does come out of our office, and so I'll own that, but I did have a chance for you, if that's correct. If you'll forbear us, see if thirty-two has the language where the corrections have been made. That may be actually what twenty-four twenty-four would be. And I just got renumbered, I think, in the haste to get this down, in the belief it was a new ordinance, but it's not.
Does Section 6 look accurate to you?
I'm reading it right now.
Oh, okay. Give us one second.
Right, and there's no objection to renumbering that. It's not, it's not of, excuse me, it's not of essence to the identity of the enactment, but it is a common order, and I believe that that was a, I believe that the administrative staff prepared that, believing it was new. That is actually supposed to be twenty-four twenty-four with the revised Section 6.
This is a revised Section 6.
Okay.
In twenty-four dash twenty-four.
So, the ordinance that was set before you, that read as thirty-two, should actually be twenty-four twenty-four. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thank you for clarification on that.
All that being said, Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four twenty-four on second reading.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit.
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor Neal. For approval on second reading, ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-four. It is, again, authorizing the issuance of Town of Maryville, Indiana taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2024, for the initiative for the Boys and Girls Club of Northwest Indiana, who will be building a new building on town property, not, not any longer town property, but property that the town sold to them, right there next to the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Open for discussion.
So the property, the property has already been sold to them?
Yes. It is on the southwest quadrant of the property.
And they are ready, and I know we had this discussion, but, so, once we vote on it, whether or not, they'll be ready to break ground after this vote?
I'm not sure about it. I think you have to raise some more funding first.
Right, they need more funding before they can break ground.
Excuse me, Mr. President, debt is now to exceed $2 million. I'm sorry.
That's, that's correct.
That's the total.
That's correct.
Ten years, $200,000 a year.
Okay. Coming out of the bond.
And to, to answer Shauna's question, I spoke with the president today at the chamber luncheon, and based on the workshop, I said, "We want to see a sign on Broadway, and we want to have a groundbreaking sometime after September," and the executive committee is in the back row, if anyone has any specific questions for them.
So he said that, that would be okay?
They would be, there will be a groundbreaking in September, yes.
Okay.
It still needs to be designed, and as Joe said, they still need to raise funds, but they will, they will spearhead this, as they promised in the workshop.
And they already bought the building?
They bought the land.
The land.
That's not a realty.
Why don't you come up to the podium, so if you have any questions, we can ask you directly, that'd be...
And as he's approaching, I just wanted to mention, everyone knows my opposition to this, as well as the Andrian School. The Town of Maryville is not a charity. We are proposing to increase everyone's taxes through a max levy increase, and, but at the same time, we're proposing to give $3 million away. That is absolutely contradictory. We're giving money away to borrow it, and borrowing the money at the same time, but yet, we're saying we, we need to go and act spring, or Indianapolis, to allow them to increase everybody else's property taxes.
Thank you, Mr. January.
I fundamentally have a problem with that.
Thank you. So let me ask a clarifying question. So are you going to be able to use this action as part of your packet to present to the bank to get loans for the project?
Yeah, so my, my name is Mike Jessen, and privileged to serve as the president/CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Great Northwest Indiana. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate everyone's time and the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we intend to do.
Sure.
At the Maryville Club. I have three of my executive committee members with me as well, showing support for this particular project, and we've had our eye on Maryville for quite some time. And many of you know, we've had a presence in Maryville for a number of years. We've been in a couple of different school sites, and we're currently in the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, where we have a couple of rooms that we lease from, from the town. And, and we're very appreciative of the opportunity to be in that facility, because at least we're able to serve, serve kids. The difficulty with that particular, that particular lease and space is because of the limitations of the space that we have, we're only serving about 20 to 30 kids on a daily basis, which we know, based on our experience with other clubs throughout Lake and Porter County, we know the impact of having a purpose-built club in a, in a community, and the impact that it has, not only on the kids, but also on the community, from a quality-of-life standpoint, and also from an economic development standpoint, in my perspective. So, we, we have ten clubs throughout, this is just a quick history, I know it's, you guys are busy, but we have ten clubs that are located in Porter and Lake County, six of them are in Lake County. There are two of the clubs that are leased facilities, and the other four are purpose-built properties that we own. So, Maryville is one of two leases that we have, and of course, our goal, our preference would be to have a purpose-built club, like the one that we would design on the, on the Maryville property. And we know with that purpose-built club, we can serve that many more kids. So, going from 20 to 30 kids per day that we currently serve for the Town of Maryville and students, when we were in a school back in 2019, we had 150 to 160 kids that we served on a daily basis, now we're only serving 20, 30, 20 to 30. We know if we build a club on that, on that particular property that we purchased from you, which we, again, very much appreciate, that we can serve, we can serve that many more kids in, in the capacity of 200 to 250 kids on an average daily basis, would be our, our expectation. And our goal, we, we, as an organization, we exist to prove every kid has what it takes, and that's what we do each and every day, and our staff are committed to doing, doing just that. So as we look at communities in, or our clubs in Valpo, and in Hammond, and East Chicago, and Chesterton, those clubs have either been, their, Valpo is newly built, those other three that I mentioned have been recently renovated, where we've invested a significant amount of money to update them and add to the capacity because of the demand that's, that's out there. We're proud to say in, in South Haven, in, so in Porter County and South Haven, we finished a five and a half million dollar remodel renovation project of a club that had been there for four decades, serving tens of thousands of kids over the course of 40 years, and tomorrow, the kids in South Haven will, their first day of school, will have the opportunity to walk into the brand-new Boys and Girls Club in South Haven Community, and they couldn't be more thrilled, the community couldn't be more, more excited. So, and I couldn't be more excited for the opportunity to be there tomorrow as well. So our hope is to have a club like that in Maryville. We know the demand is out there, and I think we can all agree that there's never been a more difficult time to be a kid, and there's never been a more difficult time to be a parent, and I can tell you, there's never been a more difficult time to be a grandparent as well. And so we want to do everything we can to impact as many kids as possible, because we think that they, we think that they deserve it, and we believe that we owe that, owe that to them, and that's exactly what we'd like to do in Maryville, as we have done in these other communities as well.
That's great, thank you, Mike.
I have a question for you.
Your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I know we spoke, and then our last conversation, we were asking, did you get a chance to talk to Dr. Suggs about revisiting using an existing building with the community, with Maryville Community School Corporation?
Yeah, so I have reached out to Superintendent Suggs, and actually have a meeting with him next week to talk very specifically about having the capacity to use a school building in the interim, prior to building our club in Maryville, but that's exactly what we'd like to do. So we can serve more kids.
Have you reached out to the school board?
Uh, just to the superintendent's office.
Okay, because the school board would be interested in this, too, on where, on where you're going with it. And Mr. January, would you please explain what you were talking about, how this is going to raise the taxes of the individuals in Maryville? Is that what you said?
Well, what I said earlier is that ultimately, with all of the decisions that are being made cumulatively through the town, Andrian a million dollars, potentially the Boys and Girls Club, $2 million, that ultimately, that does have an impact on our budget, and it's a negative impact, and it's, it will force more of us to bear the burden of the taxes. I own property on Broadway, my taxes are going to be about $15,000 a year. I pay $5,000 a year for my homeowner's taxes, and I'm not an advocate of just taking a dollar from anybody to pay somebody else that is not paying any taxes. I just think that's unjust enrichment. I don't think that the government is a charity. If you want charity, go to Impact Church. Impact Church is saying, "Don't come there."
Okay.
Mr. President, hang, hang on, Mr. President, with all due respect...
Mr. Swens, can you go to the podium and explain exactly how the allocation areas work and what we're doing with the $9.1 million we collect every year out of the TIF districts?
You collect tax dollars.
From the people that are in the TIF district, Eric?
Correct. No, that's from the Town of Maryville.
It's from the TIF, Bob?
If the allocation area did not exist, that money would be going to the Town of Maryville.
The TIF districts do not take money away from the Town of Maryville's general budget. You have a tax levy that is based on the assessed value and the tax rate. We've created these separate allocation areas to generate tax increment for economic development. And in this case, these bonds are being paid by that tax increment. So, the general population in the Town of Maryville, their taxes are not being used to make the payments on those bonds. It's being paid from the tax increment. And those are property taxes that are paid by the businesses that are in those allocation areas.
That's the whole point.
Residential taxpayers, we don't collect TIF from residential taxpayers, so an individual's homeowner's taxes aren't being used to make those payments.
At the end of the day, it's tax dollars, whether it's from a commercial district or individuals. You're taking money from somebody else, and you're giving it to not-for-profit organizations that are not generating any income. So, they're basically freeloaded.
Mr. January, you made a statement that is a very common misconception as far as how TIF works. If you were to shut down a TIF district, it seems as if that money would just flow over to the underlying taxing units.
I understand how TIFs work. Most people don't understand how TIFs work.
Mr. January, you said that if the TIF district wasn't there, that the money would go to the town. Not true.
I never said that.
Yes, you did.
No, I never said that the money will go to the town. I said it's coming from taxpayers.
Well, let's, I would just say on that.
It just happens to be going to a TIF versus the town.
The TIF money is a combination of the rates of all the taxing units. The Town of Maryville's portion of that is a very small portion. The vast majority of it is taxes that are attributable to the tax rates of all of the other overlapping taxing units. So, most of it, if somebody, you know, I mean, school rate, township rate, county rate, all of those come together. The town's portion of that is in the teens.
15%.
I believe it would be beneficial to have a seminar or something explaining to the town how TIFs work. I understand how they work, and I understand that if a TIF was dissolved, which they eventually get dissolved, that money goes back to the overall purse of the town, and it reduces everyone else's taxes. TIFs are a way of increasing.
That's not how it works, Eric.
Not true, Eric. When the TIFs dissolve, your tax bill gets divided back to dividing five ways.
That's what I was saying.
We're only going to get 15%.
That's what I'm saying. I understand that, but the whole point is right now.
We're getting 100% of the tax dollars from Amazon, from Domino's, from all the big boxes that everybody thought were, oh, yeah, Shawna's so bad. But, yeah, that's fine. If you want to think I'm bad, that's fine. But a TIF is 100% of our money. We get 100% of that tax bill.
Yes, if I lived out there, or my business was in the Maryville complex, that would be my money. But I'm not in a TIF zone.
Right.
Right, so, but ultimately, it's coming from taxpayers. That's my whole point. It's not just money that's coming out of the sky. Somebody is paying taxes.
Right, the business owners are paying that are in the TIF district.
Okay, gentlemen. Mike, anything else to add?
No.
Okay, open for public comment? This is a second reading ordinance. Is there any public comment?
Brian Messard, 201, E 68 Place. That's not how TIF works. TIF is exactly the way he explains. Plus, the business taxes is 3%, residential taxes are 1%, which means you're diverting 3% of taxes away from what would be money going into the general fund. Plus, it is not being paid to the Town of Maryville. It is being paid to the Redevelopment Commission, which is a separate entity from the Town of Maryville. And the way we have the Redevelopment Commission set up, there is no way for the Town Council to override what the Redevelopment Commission has to say. It is mathematically impossible. So, what you're actually doing is robbing Peter to pay Paul, and that's what Mr. January's point is. That TIF money and all the other taxing entities, with the exception of the county, most of that, 80% of that money would come to the Town of Maryville. All the other things are just small. Anybody can look at their tax bill. You can go right across the street to the lot, to the assessment office, and you can see all the taxing entities. And the reason why we give the Maryville school system a grant is because we're taking money away from the school system through that TIF.
No, we're not. Not anymore, Mr. Messard.
Not since 2019.
Mr. Griffin, could you explain how that works, please? Because actually, Mike mentioned that too.
I have the answers, three. I understand.
It's not accurate, though, Brian. I'm sorry.
Well.
Mr. Griffin, go ahead.
Mr. President, members of the council, members of the audience, I teach this subject. I've been doing it since 1999. I have a graduate degree as well, and I have certifications that also pertain to this. I understand that that's a common misconception, but it's mistaken. If the allocation areas went away, there'd be no new money coming in. That's it. It doesn't generate anymore, because the power of it is that instead of the 44 roughly cents per $100 of assessed valuation, it's a combination of roughly $2.57 per $100 of assessed valuation in the aggregate rate, that still gets collected and comes to us. All those other ones would go to those taxing districts, except in the allocation areas. And as a matter of fact, the Redevelopment Department is an executive department of the Town of Maryville. If there was unhappiness with anything that they did, the Town Council President could remove, at his pleasure, a majority from that commission. It couldn't act because it doesn't have a quorum. So, that's a mistaken understanding about that structure. And finally, a fair criticism could be made of the way allocation areas worked prior to 2019. And that had to do with that if you have a rate that gets fixed after your levy is set, then there's an argument made for any fixed-rate fund. That is to say, like our Cume Cap Development Fund, which is roughly 5 cents no matter what levy we put on it. So, if we grow a lot, we get a lot more money, and if we don't grow very much, we don't get very much at all, because it's just multiplied by the growth. Schools had that as well, and they could argue prior to that that they were losing money based on that. But since 2019, most of their money comes from the state, and the few that still are based on a tax levy, the rate floats. The levies are what are set. So, there's no way that the allocation area harms them whatsoever. So, the law was written in such a way, in part by some of the misunderstanding of the legislature, to be frank with you, that allows us to give those direct gifts to the schools for educational purposes and others. However, the view that it's being restitution of the schools is a mistake since 2019. It's no longer adverse to their tax collection. And I will say that, well, that's as much as I should say, I believe. Mr. President, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Saying none, back to the council. Mr. January, roll call, please, on ordinance 24 dash 24 on second, final reading. Oh, sorry, need a motion?
No, we didn't. I did it in Rhonda.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Counselor Neal. Mr. January.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
No.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Nay.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Aye, abstain.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Counsel, uh, Councilman Pettit. President Bella.
Aye.
So, two, three in favor, two no, one abstention.
The motion fails. Thank you. Moving on to Town Council Resolution 24 dash 21. It's a resolution of Town Council approving and authorizing purchase of the property, casualty and multi-peril insurance lines for the municipality through the Pampalone Insurance Agency pursuant to sections 2 dash 135 through 2 dash 139 of the Maryville Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Neal, second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Post? Motion carries.
Mr. President, we skipped ordinance 24 dash 27, which is a zone change.
I just grabbed that. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Moving back up on the agenda. To ordinance 24 dash 27. It's the Town of Maryville ordinance to amend by changing the established M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District classification to a planned unit development zoning classification in Phase 6 and amending Phases 5 and 7.
So moved.
Second.
motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Neal for approval of ordinance 24 dash 27. Mr. Pettit, is this the Grand East property?
This is the Liberty Estates adjustment that we requested at the Plan Commission.
Okay. Sheila, would you like to give us just a quick explanation of what we're doing and why we're doing this?
So, this is a part of the 200 acres that was approved for a planned unit development, and this is the final planned unit development approval for Phase 6 of that project. And what he asked at the Plan Commission, and they approved, was that he was combining Phase 6 and 7 R5 zoning to expand into Phase 6, which increased the unit of apartments from 500, I'm sorry, which increased apartment units from 500 units, from 400 units to 500 units, and removed approximately nine flex buildings on the north portion of the current Phase 6. So, he took away the big flex buildings that he had proposed, and he put a couple more apartment buildings in. And that was the Phase 6.
Thank you. Did this also then allow the town to have additional room for the possible roundabout that may go near that property, Mr. Pettit?
I have to look at that site plan again. I don't know off the top of my head.
I know that the developer is closely working with Robinson Engineering regarding those, that lining up of Wickham Street, and the developer is amenable to donate any and all property that would be needed for the roundabouts. I know that we have to follow up with Robinson.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions or comments from the council? Is this the second reading?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this ordinance 24 dash 27? Saying none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to border zoning appeals and large gathering actions. Ms. Shine.
Yes, Mr. President. Our first one is the ME Restaurant 5 Incorporated at Indiana Corporation. With counsel and petitioner, please approach the podium. So, petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section 21 dash 136 to allow food sales and service and entertainment performance on 1.641 acres in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner wants to locate a dining and restaurant in an existing building at 8239 Georgia Street. Low Country Restaurant is a seafood boil restaurant with locations in Lakewood, Illinois, South Loop, Chinatown, and Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The restaurant will have 186 seats and 15 employees. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. Petitioner submits that the establishment of the proposed special exception approval would not be detrimental to the public health, safety morals, and the general welfare, and will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity district. The parking is adequate for the proposed use, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Richard Anderson, 9211 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. Lauren Si is with me tonight, the operations manager. We're not going to go into a lot of detail because of the hour of the night, but I do want to tell you, this is the old Bar Louis building, which is on Georgia Street. It's been empty. They're excited to come here. They have four locations. The first one actually is in Lakeview in Chicago, so it's on the north side of Chicago. But any questions you'd like answered, we'd be happy to do.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
May God bless you all day.
Thank you all so much. Was second by Counselor She?
Neal.
Was it?
Neal.
You got to play with me all the time.
Richard, is that a Chinese restaurant? Chinese food?
No.
What kind of food was that?
It's a Cajun seafood boil.
Oh, my.
Yes.
Oh, the spicy New Orleans?
Um, different level of spices. We do have mild flavor, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any samples tonight?
Unfortunately, not. We need that business license.
Ah, good answer.
Any other discussion from the council?
No.
Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Counselwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Welcome to town.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Mr. President. Mr. President, next on the agenda is our large gathering permit. It is one that we get every year, and the applicant is the Northwest Indiana Hindu Religion Center, Indian American Culture Center. They're the petitioner and the owner, and they're requesting a large gathering permit for the India Fest. The location is 8605 Maryville Road. The date is August 18, 2024, and this is a Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This event is a food and festival highlighting Indian culture. The fest will be held Sunday, August 18, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Maryville Police and private security will allow a maximum of 300 people daily at this event. Tickets will not be sold for this event. The site will have two portable water stations inside the building. Soft drinks will be available as well. There will be eight male and eight female indoor toilets available to use. The toilet facilities will be maintained by the facility custodian staff. There will be two dumpsters and 10 trash cans on site, which will be maintained by total disposal. Telephone service will be available to the public, and there are 250 parking spaces on site. Overfall parking will be directed to a field on the property. Therefore, no parking will be allowed into the surrounding properties. Entertainment will be provided by members of the temple inside the cultural center hall. All food vendors have Lake County, Indiana food service permits. Hosts have secured the Indiana Department of Homeland Security amusement and entertainment permit, and there will be no animals on site for this event, nor will there be any overnight stays, and no use of fire pits or fire of any kind under the tents.
Is the petitioner here, Sheila? Did we tell them?
No, they couldn't.
We do this every year for this group.
Yes.
I'm glad to see you put in the document and on the record about the fire pits. As you know, last year, we had an issue with open burning going on underneath a tent, which is not.
Yes, I did have.
Make the fire inspector happy.
Right, we did talk to them about that, the fire inspector and myself, and they indicated that they were having a little prayer fire, but we told them that that fire that they like for the prayer has to be lit outside the tent.
Okay. And I think the fire inspector was going to stop by in the day of the event?
Yes, he's going to stop by to make sure that they adhere to those requests.
Very good. Thank you.
Our next.
I'll entertain a motion for.
I'm sorry.
I make a. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak.
Second.
Second by Counselor Neal for approval of the Hindu Religious Center, Indian American Cultural Center annual event.
Okay, our next petitioner is Elizabeth.
Sheila.
I'm sorry.
Second, Sheila.
We haven't taken the.
We got a vote.
I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January. Roll call, please.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Thank you all. Sheila Shine.
Oh, it's my turn now. Okay. Our next petitioner is Elizabeth Medina from the Legendary Movement. Would you please approach the podium, please? Petitioner is requesting special exception approval from Section 21-136 to allow a church on 1.527 acres in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Petitioner wants to locate this church in an existing building at 5490 Broadway to house, say, a church and to hold related events. There are 60 people that currently make up the congregation, which can be described as Christian non-denominational. Petitioner states that the services are as follows. On Sundays, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. church. Wednesday is prayer, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and prayer again at 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Thursday is leadership meeting, 7:00 p.m., and Friday, youth group, 7:00 p.m. The establish of the proposed special exception will not impede the normal and orderly development and will not development and improvement of the surrounding areas because petitioner states that they will adhere to the rules and regulations and ordinance of the town. And this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Counselors, questions or comments?
Yes, where were you located before?
So currently, we are a mobile church. We operate out of the Lincoln Center in Highland. We launched a legendary church. We're a church plant from California. We started in October of last year, so since then, we have grown to about 60 and increasing. So our hope is to come to Maryville to grow.
Are you all Maryville residents?
Shererville.
Were you receiving any type of real estate exemption before?
No, ma'am.
Did you apply for a religious exemption?
No.
No?
We have not.
Well, if they were renting, they wouldn't do.
Oh, you were renting?
Yeah.
Renting.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And they'll be renting this current space as well, correct?
Okay.
And did you all look for housing in Highland, Shererville, Highland area?
Yeah, so we've looked from East Chicago, Griffith, Maryville, Shererville, Dyer, Hammond. We've looked all over NWI, even going into Calumet City. And we have a real estate agent that's in our congregation that ended up finding this building, so this is just where we're at. You know, we've looked everywhere, and the honest prayer is that we don't want to be anywhere where God doesn't want us to be. This is only the door that just keeps on opening to us, and now we're here. So we're excited to be part of Maryville. We're excited what we can do in Maryville to reach the community. I liked what he was saying, is making an impact. That's actually part of our mission statement is to know God, find purpose, and make an impact. I'm believing that what God has done, not only in my life, bringing me from a place of streets, bringing me from a place of being in other areas to where I am today, is proof of an impact of when you know God for yourself, and you find that purpose, you make an impact not just for yourself, but for generations to come, right? When you find that purpose, it makes an impact in your home. It makes an impact in your school, and that's what we're hoping to bring to the city of Maryville.
What is your title with the church? Are you a minister, deacon, or what?
I am the lead pastor of Legendary Movement.
Oh, you're the lead pastor, so I'm assuming you have a religious degree?
I do not have a degree.
No?
No, except the Bible.
Pardon?
Just the Bible.
Oh, okay, so then you are self-appointed, correct?
Ordained by the Church of La Palabra de Dios in California.
Oh, in California you were ordained?
Yeah, I lived in California for 16 years. I'm originally from the south side of Chicago. Went from the south side to the Bay Area when I was 15, spent 16 years there, met my beautiful wife, Pastor Liz, in San Francisco, and this is God's plan, so I'm here. So the only degree that I can say I have is just my word through the Bible.
Out of curiosity, I'm also from Chicago, north and south sides, and when you were making the decision to decide where you're going to reside, what made you choose Shererville over Maryville, just out of curiosity?
I chose Maryville to Shererville.
School districts.
Shererville over Maryville. School districts.
Yeah, my children, they're in the back. One of the biggest things was school districts, and again, a real estate agent that found our, I'm a barber by trade, my shop in Dyer, ended up finding this house in Shererville, and we just love the community, and that's kind of how that worked.
Right, so we got to work on our reputation.
Yeah.
And now I'll be working in Maryville, so.
Is there a motion on the floor for approval?
Oh, I know what my question was, real quick, President Bella, if you don't mind. Are you renting a space or you taking the whole building?
Renting a space. It's Suite 100 at 5490 Broadway.
Which was currently, which was a church before, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Oh, okay, so this was pre-existing. Got it. Thank you.
I want to add to that. So the reason why we did come to Maryville was because God gave us a dream, and in the dream, we did see ourselves on Broadway. So when God gave us that dream and the door was open to us in Broadway, we knew that this was something that the Lord was leading us to. So we are excited to be here in Maryville. We are closing our business in Dyer because God is bringing us to Maryville, so we will be working here in Maryville starting September of 2024.
What is your rent? Where you renting?
Where we're going to be renting?
Yes.
It's going to be $2,000 a month.
Okay, so then you are collecting dues from your members, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just curious.
Final point, because I'm sure they want to move on. You may not know it, but the Maryville school system is better than Shererville's.
We did not know that, so when we moved here from California, we didn't know any cities here, to be honest with you guys. So we moved here, and we were in Hammond for five months. After that, we started looking for a house, and our agent found the house in Shererville, which we also believe was from God because of how fast it happened. We didn't know where we were going to live. We just knew that God brought us to Indiana.
It's still time to sell. It was a good mark.
I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah. I have a question. Do it either.
I have a question. As you grow, what are your plans after you've grown? To stay in Maryville or what?
Yes.
Yeah, the plans would be to Maryville. Actually, I'm hoping that we can have that beautiful problem to outgrow the building that we're at, so we do have an exit clause on our lease, so that in the fact that we do outgrow it in the five-year term that we do have, we have an exit clause to breach contract without having any kind of fees and stuff like that, but our heart is to stay in Maryville.
Okay.
Is the vision on the pirate ship, please? Pirates?
That's the mascot from Maryville.
Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
Is there a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve this Elizabeth Medina, the Legendary Movement MK partnership to allow a church, okay?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Counselor Sheldon Felton. Any additional comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. January. Roll call.
Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Right division.
Ms. Shine.
Our last petitioner for the evening is Ying Ying Zhang. Would you please approach the podium? She's the petitioner, and the owner's is Chang Kong Zeng. And this is a special exception approval to allow a dining and restaurant. The petitioner is seeking this approval from Section 21-136 on 0.241 acres in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner wants to locate this business in an existing building at 6601 Broadway. Petitioner would like to use this building to house a dining and restaurants serving Asian fare six days a week, but closed on Monday. This restaurant will serve a variety of food such as kimchi, edamann, soup, rices, and bowls. Granting this special exception will allow the petitioner to reopen a restaurant that was previously owned by the same family. Approval of this special exception will not be detrimental to the neighborhood in any way in that this building has always served as some type of restaurant, be it barbecue, Asian fare, et cetera. Additionally, the proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity, nor will it impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district, because again, this property has always been used as a restaurant. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, ingress, egress, and parking already exist. The hours of operation are Tuesday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and there will be approximately two to four employees for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And, Mr. President, I would like to thank her for all of her work that she did to bring the property back up to where it should be. She cleaned out the back. She put a brand-new roof on. She's in the process of painting, and she did everything that we asked her to do because we did have some complaints for some neighbors around there, so I'd like to publicly thank you for all that you did.
Thank you.
Did you bring some noodles?
I need a business license first.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a special exception for 6601 Broadway.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pettit. Second by who?
Chandler Felton can have it.
Olivia. Open for discussion.
Okay, is this Chinese?
Question.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Who's talking?
Go ahead.
Oh, the original owner was my mother-in-law, so right now it's different generation, so we are going to taking over this place, and I am in charge right now.
Okay.
Is this a Chinese restaurant?
Actually, it's different kinds of Chinese. It's include Asian style, like Japanese food, Korean food, and Vietnamese, so it's kind of mix.
Okay, the reason why I asked, I do not see chop suey on here. That's why I asked you.
Yes, different kinds of.
Okay.
So we are doing most like a soup noodle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything else to add, Ms. Shine?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Welcome to Maryville. Aye.
Thank you.
Six in favor.
Welcome, Daniel.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to new business. We have the appointment of the Maryville Metropolitan Police Commissioner.
Yes, President Bella, I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Neal.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Luther Catino to fill the unexpired spot of Jean Ward, and that term will end in 2026. Second.
This is going to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Ward, the late Commissioner Ward, I should say. Second by Counselor She?
Yes.
Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Thank you all. Chief, could you get ahold of past chief Catino, let him know he's been appointed to the police commission?
We'll do that.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to a formation of a new citizen advisory committee to investigate data centers. The town of Maryville will establish a data center citizen advisory committee functioning as a subcommittee of the Council Affairs Committee dedicated to studying the issue of data centers. A data center is a facility, a building, a dedicated space within a building, or a group of buildings that houses computer systems and related components, including telecommunications and storage systems. Given the critical role of information technologies in business continuity, data centers typically feature redundant or backup components and infrastructure, such as power supply, data communication connections, environmental controls, including air conditioning, fire suppression, and security devices. A large data center operates on an individual, excuse me, industrial scale, consuming as much electricity as a small town. In 2022, global data center electricity consumption was estimated at 240 to 340 terawatt-hours, accounting for approximately 1% to 1.3% of global electricity demand. Data centers vary significantly in size, power requirements, redundancy, and structure. They are generally categorized into four types: onsite data centers, coalition facilities, hybrid-scale data centers, and edge data centers. As with any new development in a community, there are likely to be questions and a general need for more understanding about data centers. Maryville is taking a proactive approach to learning as much as possible about data centers, their impact on communities, and their potential benefits. The formation of this special advisory board will enable residents to participate in verifying information about data centers, helping everyone become more informed about these emerging developments. The details of the committee, including its size, requirements, and structure, are still being finalized. However, these details will be expedited to allow the town to begin gathering information on this important topic swiftly. A possible list of who might be good to serve on this committee include a member of the fire department, a real estate developer who is not connected to this industry, a member of the Plan Commission, a member of the border zoning appeals, a variety of Maryville residents, the chairperson of the Council Affairs Committee or designee, and the town council president. We will gather and discuss this at our workshop on the 21st, so we can move quickly. And the reason we're doing this is we've been approached by four different companies to purchase large amounts of land in town to build data centers. Some are close to neighborhoods. Some are in industrial parks, industrial areas, and we need to learn about these centers so that we're educated and we don't make the wrong decisions about allowing them to town. Moving on to announcements, excuse me, public comment. Is there any public comment this evening?
Mr. President, I want public comment to be facilitated. I beg your pardon. I was advised by our security people that members of Logan's Love are out there, the people that helped our police department as well with their backpacks. that helped our police department as well with their backpacks, and they wanted an opportunity to address the council.
And that would be the proper time to do that, sure.
That's right, so I had them wait. Are you in the back there?
Yes.
Very well. They supplied me with this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you, Michael.
And for the rest of the public, please, thank you for your forbearance, we'll resume with that as soon as possible.
Oh, the Ben's Blue Bags, yeah.
Yes, Ben's, you guys remember us coming?
Of course, sure do. Yeah, yeah.
We're back here again, and we waited to come up here to talk, to invite all of you guys here, the police, the fire, the town, everybody here to Lake County's Second Annual Autism Walk that we have started. We're having it this Sunday at Rowan Park in Sherrville. We're, everything that we're doing, we're continuing to supply Lake County with the Ben's Blue Bags and the training that goes along with it. And we also partnered up with Project Lifesaver, which is supplying individuals that suffer from elopement, tracking devices. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Project Lifesaver, certain fire departments have it, and we wanna kind of expand that, have more individuals, more special needs children get these devices. Also, elderly people with Alzheimer's can get these as well. So our mission has been and always will be to do better for the community, do better for the special needs community, so we're hoping that you guys put us up, and that you guys share us, and send the police, the fire, because we have a bunch of the towns and counties, so we're going this week to all, each town council meeting, we've been breaking up in teams to officially invite you guys.
Well, thank you very much. I believe that our police department has the Ben's Blue Bags in our police cars, don't they, Chief?
Yes, we have done you guys already. We officially got you guys fully, all of them. We're trying to get the rest of the county, we have the majority, I think we have about 10?
11 as of next week.
11 departments, so we're still got a couple more to go, so we're, everything we do with this walk, with the funding, is to continuing supporting the Ben's Blue Bags and growing on to Project Lifesaver.
Well, great, good luck to you.
Thank you.
And Chaz, I'll keep this for you, so you can get it posted on social media, et cetera.
What time is the, what time is the walk?
Registration's at noon, and then the walk starts off at 1:00. We do have a phone release, a phone release, we have some bounce houses, some food vendors, and some information tables, and a whole lot of fun, and a whole lot of stuff going on. And we do, we will come back and let you guys know about our sensory Santa, and we also have a sensory Easter egg hunt, so we like to try to give all kids with special needs the same type of events that every other neurologist gets.
Sure, thank you, guys.
Hope you guys are.
Any other public, any other public comment this evening?
Yes.
Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Inez Clarkson, I reside in Turkey Creek subdivision. I've been here since 1985, and today's the last, I wouldn't even expect to even ever be here talking to you guys, gentlemen and men, today of the council board. We've had a lot of problems in our neighborhood, and I've contacted all of yous, no one has responded except for Ms. Felton. And then, Ms. Neal, your husband contacted me, but he never responded. So I'm gonna write, I'm gonna read something, so I don't go off track, I did write something. Firstly, I want to bring attention to the current state of our parks. It is disheartening to see them in such poor condition with little to no upkeep. These parks are meant to be spaces where families and children can relax and play, but they are not receiving the care and attention they deserve. I urge the town to prioritize the maintenance of these green spaces, as they are vital to the well-being of our community. Secondly, there seems to be a significant lack responsiveness from the Maryville employees regarding issues that residents have raised. Emails go unanswered, and concerns are not being addressed in a timely manner, if at all. This lack of communication and accountability is unacceptable and needs to be addressed immediately. We deserve to have our voices and our concerns acted upon. Another major issue is the noticeable absence of police present in our neighborhoods. This has led to a sense of insecurity among residents, and it's something that needs to be corrected. The safety of our community should be top priority, and that starts with a visible and proactive police force. There are, since this summer, I've been accosted by children at the park, I was almost assaulted. My husband and a bunch of neighbors have been pelted with Orbeez guns, walking their dogs, riding bikes, and when I speak, I speak for the whole Turkey Creek subdivision. There's at least 30 residents, plus more, I'm going out to see what's going on. There's one lady that lives right next to the park, she stated that every night she gets scared because it seems like somebody is coming and trying to open her door. It took me a long time this whole summer to get the police, the video surveillance on, you guys finally did it. But this is after I've been accosted, after kids have met up the park. Those kids, ranging from 11 years old to 18 years old, they're breaking into homes, they're stealing cars, and these kids live in our neighborhood. Why do they, how do I know that? Because we have to be proactive, and we've been following them. We know where they live, we know who they are, I've looked up their houses online to see who these residents are, and in a four-block radius, there's 10 houses that are, that are owned by LLCs, that are owned by businesses, that are owned by McCauley, and they're renting them out. So what's going on is that, in the Turkey Creek subdivision, we're getting a lot of these people who are renters, and they don't care. They don't care about the garbages that are out, I have, everybody has called the code enforcement. Thankfully, this year, the code enforcement has stepped up and done what they had to do. Also, just recently, there's a neighbor who was assaulted, the police were called, and it was a 16-year-old lady and an 18-year-old lady. Thankfully, this lady broke the little girl's arm, now we don't have any problems. So it seems like we have to take action in order for this stuff to stop, and it shouldn't be like that, but that's what's going on. So we're having a lot of problem where we're getting terrorized by these children, and I don't know what to do about it. I've tried to contact everyone on the board, I sent pictures of the park, it's been vandalized. I sent pictures of streets, the same spray paint that is on the park, Stephick Park, Tahoe Park is what I call it, has the same spray paint that I see on the street over from me that says the F-word and somebody's name, they're vandalizing trees with that same red spray paint. So there's a lot of stuff, issues going on, and I think you guys really, really need to focus on the police department, put more money into the police department, put more money into protecting the citizens, because their hands are stretched. You know, they can only do so much. That night when I called, they told me only six police officers were working that night, and I couldn't believe my, I couldn't, I just couldn't understand why. Maryville's a big town, however, these are my concerns, there's a lot of violence going on, and a lot of people are afraid to work, to walk in Turkey Creek. Everybody on my block has cameras, so now we're getting down to the bottom of it, we're finding out who these kids are, and we're, I'm not moving. I don't, I've been here for like, over 35 years, and I will not move. If I have to, if, I will walk those streets. I found the kids for the police officers, I found the backpack, I found the screwdriver for the police officers, and this is at 3:00 o'clock at night. I haven't been able to sleep, my dogs wake me up, it's just not, it's non-stop. So I'm also deeply concerned about the trend of houses being sold to corporations, turned into rental properties. This shift is causing a number of problems in our neighborhoods, from noise complaints to neglect of property upkeep. Renters often do not have the same stake in the community as homeowners, and this can lead to deterioration of our neighborhoods. I believe we need to explore policies that will encourage homeownership and prevent the unchecked expansion of corporate-owned rentals. In conclusion, these issues poorly maintain parks, unresponsive town employees, lack of police present, the rise of corporate-owned rentals, and the neglect of garbage collection are all contributing to a decline in the quality of life in Maryville. I urge the council to take these concerns seriously and take immediate action to address them. Our town deserves better, and it's time we work together to ensure that Maryville remains a place we can all be proud to call home. If anyone would like to contact me regarding any of these concerns, please feel free to do so. I am more than willing to discuss these issues further and work together to find solutions.
Ready, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, right there, yes.
I also, one more thing, Mr. January, I take offense to what you said about Catholic. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Andrian does take state money, they help fund its cult, what is it called?
I don't know.
Okay, well, they do give public, the state does give money for kids to attend Andrian.
The voucher program.
Yes, thank you. And a lot of people from Maryville, you know, you say Maryville High School's a good school, it's not.
It is.
No, it's not.
I have three children that have gone there, gotten scholarships, everything. The girl that was ranked 27th in Maryville got $700,000.
Okay, well, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about anything like that, I'm talking about what they teach, what they instill in these kids.
In school.
Yes.
Were they in advanced classes?
No, my, I've had two kids in Maryville, two kids at Andrian.
Finish up, guys.
And I take offense to what you said about the Catholics, and that's racism against that discrimination. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I will make sure, no, it's not, and I will make sure.
Okay, guys.
I will make sure that you are not reelected, I have three years to get you out of office.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is why we were trying to support the Boys and Girls Club, to get these kids off the streets and give them something to do, after-school, have positive programs.
You're gonna bring more problems. That Dean and Barbara White Center, that should have been a police station.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I want to know where the remainder of the money from the Barb and Dean, you guys got funding, right, a grant or funding or, so where did you guys allocate all of that money towards that?
No, it's at the Legacy Foundation, earning interest.
Distributed yearly.
It's distributed yearly to us.
And this is our comment section, and we don't answer questions, but you can always reach us after the meeting, and we can ask you questions.
If you guys contact me back.
If you're here in the meeting, we can ask you a question.
But yes, but we elect you in, so if I call you and if I contact you via email.
We can speak with you right after the meeting.
But I'm stating, if I contact you, you, all of yous need to just respond, because a lot of people have contacted you.
I haven't gotten an email from you, but we can speak right after the meeting.
Yes, you have.
Okay.
The only person who doesn't have an email is Ms. Yuzlak, she probably doesn't know anything about it.
Oh, yes, I do, you can call me anytime, I'm a Catholic. I attended Bishop's High School, I know what you're talking about. I do know about the voucher program, I've been involved with Father Ted from St. Andrews, it used to be St. Andrews, Holy Martyrs, and Our Lady of Consolation. So I know exactly what you're talking about, and anybody could call me anytime.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, this is a perfect example, because this, I've been.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Brian Massage 201 East 68th Place, I have already stated it for the record.
Thank you.
These people have the same complaint that has been going on for years. I've been coming to these meetings for years, nonresponsiveness, and communication has been a problem for years. It needs to be addressed. And what they're saying, we're spending, we want to spend money on things like Boys and Girls Club, that's a private corporation, they can take care of themselves. They've obviously spent five and a half million dollars in South Haven, and Andrian is, that is also a private entity, which is also part of Mr. January's thing. We need to start taking care of ourselves. We need more police so that neighborhoods are safe, so that people stop running redlights. Every, I live right by Broadway, and there are now accidents constantly because people don't know what a red light means. Why? Because we don't even have enough police to have traffic control. We need to reinvest in ourselves. We, I can explain to you why town employees are the way they are, because they're busy worrying about whether they can pay their NIPSCO bill or should they buy food, because they're not getting paid enough, which is why we're doing a salary study. Because these people are overworked, underpaid, and they're thinking about other things like, where do I, where else do I have to go to get a job? Do I bartend, do I work at Taco Bell for $18 an hour? We need to reinvest in ourselves in things like community events. We have nine and a half million dollars, we should be spending that on ourselves, making this a better town to live in, not on other entities. There are plenty of other options and after-school options besides Boys and Girls Club. They own property on the corner of 61st and I-65 that they never take care of, it's overgrown, it looks terrible. No one ever brings that up, because, oh, we're not supposed to. At what point in time do we start looking and focusing on higher priority items than other things? Our fire chief was here begging for more people. We cannot have a safe town without more police and more fire people. And then, if you would allow residents to get involved and take ownership of their town and be on the committees, your data center, I'd love to be on your data center committee. I built NIPSCO's data centers, I could tell you all about data centers. That's what you need to do, allow residents to get involved, to make the change, to make this better. It doesn't always have to cost millions of dollars.
Thank you.
I hope you saved the best for last. I heard you're having sandwiches in about 10 minutes, so that's the only reason I'm sticking around, the new restaurants in town. But anyhow, my name is Vern Heine, this is the second meeting I'm talking at. Last meeting, I talked about a different topic, but this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I'm a member of the Maryville Historical Society, and last Saturday, we had a group of the class of 1964, had their 60th reunion in Maryville, and they took a tour of the Maryville museum, and we had 20 people there, and I gave the tour. But one of the problems that we arrived, when we had, three years ago, when we had the 50th, we had a function at the, at the historical museum, and they put up a big ramp for us, and people could get in, and that was there about two or three months, and then they took it away, it was rented, a big structure, took them a day to put it up. But anyhow, the reason I'm here tonight, we need a ramp. I felt bad, we had to turn two people away because they couldn't get in the building, it's not handicap accessible, and there should be, with the American Disability Act, some money that we could get to build a ramp there. Doesn't have to be anything elaborate, but the older people, they enjoy knowing the history of Maryville, and that's there. Anybody that's ever gone through that thing, it's just, it's like stepping back into a time capsule. So I'm hoping that this council can come up with some money to make us a decent ramp, so we can get people in there with handicapped disabilities. Getting to the second floor, that's an old school, it was built in 1930s, and getting up to the second floor, the steps are only like three or four inches because the kids went there, but on the outside, they're nine or 10 inches, which is not conducive for an older person. So I'm asking, with my, my hat in my hand, I'm hoping you can come up with some money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to announcements, the next town council meeting is Tuesday, August 27th at 6:30. The RDC meeting is August 27th at 6:15, and we already mentioned the town council workshop August 21st at 5:00. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.